Okay, 6:30, we'll call the meeting to order, welcome everyone. Mauricio, roll call?
Commissioner Goldman.
Here.
Commissioner Lama.
Here.
Commissioner Viscara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Svechnikoff.
Here.
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
All members present.
Okay, if we can stand for the pledge. Commissioner Gatto, be the honors today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Father Curlin.
Yes.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for inviting me. Heavenly Father, send your Holy Spirit upon all of us gathered here this evening to enlighten, guide, and strengthen us. Give grace to all those who have responsibility to work for the betterment, growth, and protection of all your sons and daughters who live in Sunny Isles Beach. Endow them with your wisdom, fortify them with courage and compassion, and help them to remember the words of President John F. Kennedy in his inaugural address. Here on earth, God's work must truly be our own. We ask all these things in your name, eternal Father and loving God of us all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the special city commission meeting of May 16th? The minutes?
It's the regular city commission.
Oh, it says special, it's a regular. Okay. The regular city commission meeting of May 16th.
So moved.
Okay, there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, minutes are approved. Can we roll the, can we roll our opening statement, please?
Welcome, and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that come before the city commission, we ask that by listening quietly to each person speaking, and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers.
Okay, we have some changes to our agenda tonight. We have an add-on, we have Item 5E, a presentation by Zoma Pelig. We have Item 5F, a legislative update by Senator Jason Pizzo, if he can make it. And then we have some revisions to Item 10D, 10H, and 10J. Do I hear a motion to accept the changes to the agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Changes accepted. Okay. Item 5A, so we have a very esteemed guest tonight, Aletha, Aletha Player, and I'm going to speak on the behalf of our city manager who's out, who's out today, and he's not feeling well. But I can tell you that when you're managing a city, you want a very good friend at FPNL and maybe at the water department as well. But these are the two things that we have very little control over but have a huge impact on our quality of life in this city. And I can tell you, Aletha has been a friend of this city as long as I've known her, it's been several years, and there hasn't been a time when we've called her for anything where I would say that she hasn't really bent over backwards and put the full resources of FPL behind our request. So, you know, it's with joy for Aletha, but maybe a little bit of pain on our part that we see her retire, you know, and, but I, but I just want to, you know, I want to publicly thank Aletha for everything that she's done for us. We have a plaque for her, we couldn't let her leave without giving her a nice piece of glass, so we're gonna, so we want to make a, come down and maybe take a picture if the commission can come down as well. And we, Aletha, if you could come up? And if you'd like to say a few words, you know, be our guest, so.
Good evening, the mayor and commission. It's truly an honor for me to have served you in the capacity as I have and for the years that I've been with you. It's bittersweet for me as well, I'm looking forward to that next chapter of my life, but I'm still here, you know, I'm not moving away, my phone number has not changed. So if I could be of further service to you in a consulting manner, I'm certainly available.
That's a dangerous statement, Aletha, so I apologize. I'll watch that one. So. Okay. Community Award. And I'm going to let Vice Mayor Svechnikoff take that one.
Could we combine 5B?
5B and 5C? Okay, so we're going to combine 5B and 5C on our presentation list. Go ahead.
So, as many of you know, I have been very involved with the PTA, PTSA at our school. One of our board members is here, Fabiola, who's now on the board, and some actual PTA members are here as well. And every year, there is an award that's banquet in May. This year I couldn't attend, but I submitted for various awards, and all I do is actually write them, so I don't actually do the work. But, and one of those was the champion of the community. And basically, you're supposed to nominate someone in the community, whether it be a business or perhaps someone that has a nonprofit that works with the PTA to get things done. Well, as many of you know, our biggest support is the city, and that would be Pelican Park. And I think, I'd like, Sylvia, can you come up? This is for you. You didn't tell her?
Oh, now she's getting all embarrassed.
And then, and then.
It's fun to embarrass Sylvia.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to go into the detail of how much support Sylvia gives the PTA and the school, but it has been for many years, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I hope it continues even when I'm not on the board. And in tandem, they also offer a safety award, and so we have been putting together various events at the school for a couple of years, but this year we tightened it up with Sergeant Gonzalez, and we had a few that had to do with human trafficking, also about texting and bullying and harassing, and these are really impactful. We get a pretty large crowd to attend, and the parents love it, and so I nominated our police department because they're the ones that are responsible for it, and we won for that as well. So if the chief can come up, I can give that to him, because Patty's not here.
Pictures?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not as nice.
Yep. Okay. Oh, no, no. You're on the map. Alex. Okay. Stand early, won't you? How about yours? No, that's not going to work. There you go. It's not very large. Three jobs. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, so for Item 5D, we also have a proclamation for Father Curlin, and I'm going to let Commissioner Lama, Alex, you want to, you want to read your proclamation?
Good evening, everybody. You know, this is a big thank you to Father Curlin. He has been with us, with the community for nine years, you know, being our spiritual guide, serving us, and obviously, you know, we've been very involved. He's done the first communion for, to my kids, and the confirmation for one of them. So I just, we just wanted to give this, read this proclamation to Father Curlin. The city of Sunny Isles Beach takes great pride in recognizing individuals and enterprises that serve to enrich the fabric of our community. And Father Bernard Curlin has served as a priest for 48 years in numerous parishes throughout the state of Florida. And Father Curlin became the pastor of St. Mary Magdalene Church in 2010, and over the course of the nine-year span as the priest of St. Mary Magdalene Church, Father Curlin has performed 225 baptisms, 535 first communions, and 52 weddings. After nine years of faithful priesthood, Father Curlin retire, is retiring or retired from St. Mary Magdalene Parish on June 15th of this year. The city of Sunny Isles Beach wishes to thank Father Bernard Curlin for his faith service, faithful service and involvement in this community. Now therefore, on behalf of our mayor, George Budshaw, and on behalf of the city commission of City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, we hereby proclaim Thursday, June 20th, 2019, as Father Curlin Day in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. Thank you very much, we really appreciate all you've done for us.
Okay, one more picture?
Yeah, one more picture.
This is the last picture of the day, this is it. Okay, I think we should have just moved the dais down to the floor. There we go. Get our dessert. Now, you're in the, you're in the. Yes, sir. Hold on, hold on a second. Okay, we've got to add on Item 5E, a presentation by Zoma. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Svechnikoff?
So, many of you know who Zoma Pelig is, I'm not going to go into it because she's going to present and talk, but her and I are friends, and I invited her to come and speak and remind us of her story, so welcome.
Thank you, thanks for being here, Zoma.
Well, thank you for having me over. I'm thrilled by the opportunity of being here with the, with the team of Sunny Isles Beach that I only have the great memories of all of you. Sunny Isles, regardless of the fact that right now, unfortunately, I'm not part of, I'm not a citizen of the city anymore, but it's a very big, you guys have a big piece of my heart, as the community is outstanding, from the people that goes to, that I met in Milan's, to the group, Sunny Isles Beach Moms Group. As most of you know, my family unfortunately are not for the best reasons. A year ago, July 1st of 2018, my family faced a tragedy when we were hit by, we were hit by Joseph Franco, an individual from Golden Beach that was driving under the influence, and that unfortunately, my husband died on the scene, I was left in a coma, and both of my kids were hospitalized. The good news is that Mariella, my older daughter, now came out of the wheelchair and is finally walking, and my baby too. Currently, this individual, thanks to the authorities, is facing serious charges as four DUIs for driving under the influence, one charge for manslaughter and reckless driving, and one charge for tampering with physical evidence. The positions are taking place since last week, and mid-August is when our trial processes are starting. We had, what I wanted to share is that we had a very happy life when we were here in Sunny Isles, and Sampson Park was part of my everyday, so pretty much, everything happened in the same street where, where we used to live. For the sanity of my family, we were obligated to move out, to recover mentally, and to become stronger, so right now, currently, we live in Surfside. But the reason why I wanted to approach all of you is because, well, eventually, I miss all of you when I'm still here, but I'm trying to accomplish that my kids see Sampson Park not as the place where individuals thrive and stroke people, where families cannot walk, where we are like not in a, I want, I want my kids and all the families to see Hollins Avenue especially, and Sampson Park as a family place where we all can enjoy the beauty of the city. In order for me to accomplish this, I wanted to, to request to see if the board, or, sorry, it's called the board?
Yeah, commission, sorry.
Commission, sorry.
Call us what you want.
In the hospital, it's the board, so.
The board, no, sorry.
I wanted to request to the commission of the city if we could, if it's any type of remembrance or like something that could have, that could sustain my husband's name, a bench that could have my family name, my husband's name, as, 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 as a way that every single family sees that we are all involved, that we are all part of, that we all care about families, that what happened would not be forgotten. And currently, I'm initiating a foundation against reckless driving and driving against drugs and all these type of things to help families in, pretty much, I'm going to start by the beach section, that is the closest one, moving for hopefully Stay-Wide. What the main point, what I'm trying to say is that with this bench, I would like to see, I would like any family to, to know that they will never, that the city is on top of everything that's happening, that, and I don't want ever any family to go through the pain of not being able to celebrate Father's Day with their kids, or to don't been raised to, been able to raise their families as a whole. At the end of the day, that's the most important thing that we all have. That's it.
Before you sit down, but thank you very much for coming and sharing your story.
Sorry, this topic is very difficult.
That's okay, that's okay.
I haven't been able, even driving Hollins Avenue.
No, I understand, but also, but people aren't used to public speaking, so you did a great job. But before you sit down, I think Vice Mayor Svechnikoff has something to add.
Yeah, thank you for your bravery and your newfound commitment to giving back and volunteering. I'd like to move to install a bench, Mauricio, in Sampson Park in her husband's name. Can I get a second?
Sure, sure. Need a motion?
Yep.
So I'm making the motion.
Do we have a motion? There a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You see how easy it was? Nothing's that easy around here, but for you, it was easy, so.
You guys are just as special.
No, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Zoma.
And so thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Item 5F, which is our legislative update, is Senator Pizzo here? There, Jason, how are you? Good. Didn't see you sneak in, come on up. So this is our state senator for our region here, Senator Jason Pizzo, and we're happy to have him.
Thank you.
Jason, thanks for coming.
Thank you, and I missed the last meeting, I apologize.
Don't worry.
I was tied up in North Miami Beach in another meeting. I proudly serve 15 cities, and if I could just take up a point of privilege, Father Curlin, my boys received first communion from you six years ago. Ms. Pelig, your husband and I went to the same law school, I think he was the first year, when I was the third year, so with the commission's permission, I would like to personally offer to pay for the bench as a memorial to your husband.
Thank you very much.
And if you'll indulge me on how much time I have, I'll try not to be verbose and ornamental, but there are a number of things that happened this past session that directly affect Sunny Isles Beach in particular.
We're kind of a Cliff Notes commission, so you can.
You got it. And I have a very Cliff Notes section, and I'll be available, and I have cards for everybody to pass out. I want to first go to what we all suspected, as many of you know, I was a Sunny Isles Beach resident for a couple of years, and it looks like in the next 60 days, I will be again, if you'll have me. Texting while driving passed. And when Mr. Pelig passed, rabbis had asked me, do we think it was texting, do we think it was distracted driving? That law is being signed into law by the governor, and it's passed. What it effectively means for everybody in front of me and behind me, beginning October 1st, you'll receive a warning until January 1st of 2020, in which case, just operating and using your phone in your hand, you'll be pulled over and cited. If you're at a stop, you can operate your phone, other than that, don't touch it. Very seriously, don't touch the phone. Police are going to be directed to take it very, very seriously. One bill that passed that I voted against at every stage in committees was very important, and I want to thank city manager Chris Russo for being immediately responsible, we were in Tallahassee, was SB 1000. You guys were ranked by AT&amp;T as the worst city in the entire south region of Florida for being uncooperative. The reality was, is that you guys have, to behoove, your residents have laid out extensive amounts of cost to lay all conduit and what have you underneath and to make a nice aesthetic thing. So I fought back on it, I voted no, called bluff, it was very unpopular. Aventur was similarly situated, they had a similar circumstance where the cotton tractor had actually destroyed some landlines and refused to pay, so I voted no. In exchange, I got the legislative appreciation award for local home rule, which was good. Airbnb short-term rentals was shelled and not heard, passed the first committee, that's good news, that's an extension of local control. Regardless of your party or political persuasion, I am very pleased lately with our governor as it relates to the environment, but also from a small little footnote, basically also kind of designating local control of the town mothers and fathers, there was a plastic straw ban ordinance that many municipalities have passed, I think it's somewhere on your agenda tonight, so I'm here to tell you that HB 771 was the first bill by the governor that was vetoed. And what effectively that says is have at it, that local control, that the locals should be able to control, and if the locals behind me don't like what you guys are doing, they have the method and remedy and recourse to go ahead and vote you out if they want plastic straws. But it speaks obviously to the much bigger picture, which is local control. Just today, the governor signed SB 1552, which is a Florida red tide mitigation program. It's a very healthy-funded program that'll be out of Sarasota at the Mode Institute to deal with red tide issues and problems. Obviously, you guys are a part of all of my coastal communities, which are suffering the sargassum seaweed, we can go into that at length, but we're actively in contact with the Department of Health at the state level and the DEP, especially concerned about the hydrogen sulfide emanation, as well as skin disorders and things like that, so we're on it. Business rent tax for all of your businesses will drop 20 basis points to 5.5%. Ms. Goldman, Commissioner Goldman and I have been in a lot of communication, have filed a bill that made a lot of people unhappy, because I think that it's high time in 2019 that condo docs should be readily available to everybody and instantly, and not have to wait 10 days. So I'm developing a very nice little bromance with the new secretary of the Department of Banking and Professional Regulation to allow all condos, large and small, to upload everything. We also worked it out, sort of an academic arm wrestle, and I'm pleased to tell you that the condo investigation bureau of the Department of Banking and Professional Regulation will be moving from Tallahassee to Miami-Dade County. That's where the highest concentration of condos are in this strip, so there's no more, I can't get anybody on the phone and nobody's being responsive, it's coming here. And they're interviewing now for that position, I've made a couple recommendations. Inclusionary zoning also passed, but it's at the discretion of the city, whether or not they want to include inclusionary zoning for affordable housing, but you can offer bonuses and density as well. A couple of issues that may have been concerned to the legal section of the city are electronic legal docs, things can be notarized now electronically and submitted, which is going to cause some concern in the learning curve. Obviously, you know that the limits now in county courts have been raised to 30,000, if there's an amount in dispute as opposed to 15,000, I'm sorry, I'm going quickly. I saw many of you 12 hours ago this morning. Also, there's another coastal management bill that we expect the governor's going to pass, it's HB 325 from Chippala Markham, just north of us. I will tell you that the scooter bill was also just signed. We'll work out the details, but it was done in a bit of a salve to the municipalities to have some control over it, as opposed to just being sort of an Airbnb type of issue. I cannot take credit, my predecessor used to come with framed proclamations and want to take photos, and I promised all of you, when I asked for your support during campaigning, that I was not, never going to do that, I was going to bring you good legislation and dollars. I cannot take credit, though, Representative Joe Geller was able to push with your lobbyist book, and especially Raina, the ones behind the scenes like my Maggie, to secure, and hopefully the governor has two weeks not to put the red pen through it. I sent him a love letter yesterday, asking him, please don't touch it, the $425,000 for your pedestrian bridge for 180. I would also like to tell you that for this session, we're going to be going for the Golden Beach Landfall Team Bunker, which is going to be a collection, a consortium of coastal cities to be used for hurricane preparedness. And then finally, I would like to offer our services, and by our, I mean, as many of you know, I was a former homicide prosecutor with Miami-Dade State Attorney's Office, but Maggie's a 15-year veteran. When you go back to that video taken from the balcony during the shooting here a couple weeks ago, we're in the black SUV right there next to the, next to the shooting, and my first call was to Vice Mayor Svechnikoff, who was there obviously at the property. I know you guys will be having some discussions and some consideration, gun violence of any form, at any location, in any time, place, and manners of great concern to me, and what I did professionally, so I'm here. I just want to thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions, a number of other things, Bud.
So on the last issue, we have a very concerted effort now to deal with that, to basically deal with it next year, and so we'll keep in the loop on that.
Please do, please do.
Because I've been, I've been getting my constituent mayors or my colleagues, you know, around the northeast Dade County together, and I'm waiting for the police to finish their investigation.
Sure.
The police are still, you know, they're actually doing an excellent job, and we're being in pretty close contact with Miami-Dade homicide, but, but, but it was, you know, we don't ever want to see anything like that happen again anywhere. It was unbelievable.
Mary, the reason why we moved up here is because several years ago, I was followed home from juvenile court by two armed juveniles that came to kill me because they were defendants in my case.
Yep.
That's the reason why we scrambled and moved up north here.
Understood.
So I appreciate everyone's concern and the safety.
Well, now the best is yet to come, because you're going to move over the bridge, so you, so this is it, yeah.
Exactly.
That's a good thing, but.
But I'm happy to take any questions, I'll be available here, we're going to set for the duration.
Any questions for the senator from the dais?
I just, I just want to say, Senator Pizzo, thank you for always being available and working so hard, anytime.
municipalities to have some control over it, as opposed to just being sort of an Airbnb, uh, type of issue. I cannot take credit, um, my predecessor, um, used to come with framed, uh, proclamations and want to take photos. And I promised all of you, when I asked for your support during campaigning, that I was not, never going to do that. I was going to bring you good legislation and, and dollars. I cannot take credit, though. Representative Joe Geller was able to push with your, uh, your lobbyist book, and especially Raina, the ones behind the scenes, like my Maggie, um, to secure, and hopefully the governor has two weeks not to put the red pen through it. I sent him a love letter yesterday asking him, please don't touch it, uh, the $425,000 for your pedestrian bridge for 180. Uh, I would also like to tell you that for this session, we're going to be going for the Golden Beach Landfall Team Bunker, which is going to be a collection, a consortium of coastal cities, uh, to be used for hurricane preparedness. Uh, and then finally, um, I, I would like to offer our services, and by our, I mean, as many of you know, I was a former homicide prosecutor with Miami-Dade State Attorney's Office, but Maggie's a 15-year veteran. Um, when you go back to that video taken from the balcony during the shooting here a couple of weeks ago, we're in the black SUV, uh, right there next to the, um, next to the shooting, and my first call was to Vice Mayor Sfetchen, who was there, obviously, at the, at the property. I know you guys will be having some discussions and some, and consideration, gun violence, uh, of any form, at any location, in any time, place, and manners of great concern to me and, and what I did professionally. Um, so I'm here. Um, I just want to thank you. I'm happy to take any questions, a number of other things, bud.
So on the last issue, we, we have a very concerted effort now to deal with that, to basically deal with it next year, and so we'll keep in the loop on that.
Please do, please do.
Cause I've been, I've been getting my, my constituent mayors, or, or my, my colleagues, you know, around the northeast Dade County together, and I'm waiting for the police to finish their investigation.
Sure.
The police are still, you know, they're, they're actually doing an excellent job, and we've been in pretty close contact with Miami-Dade homicide, and, um, but, but, um, but it was, you know, we, we don't ever want to see anything like that happen again anywhere. I, it was unbelievable.
Mary, the reason why we moved up here is because several years ago, I was followed home from juvenile court by two armed juveniles that came to, to kill me because they were defendants in my case.
Yep.
That's the reason why we scrambled and moved up north here.
Understood.
So I appreciate everyone's concern and, and the safety.
Well, now the best is yet to come, because you're going to move over the bridge. So you, so this is it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's a short little skip line.
That's a good thing, but.
But, uh, happy to take any questions. I'll be available here. We're going to set for the duration.
Any questions for the Senator from the dice?
I just, I, I just want to say, uh, Senator Pizzo, thank you for always being available and, and working so hard. Anytime that I call you or text you, you respond immediately, and likewise Maggie, probably even faster. So it's, it's ver, it's very much noticed and appreciated. Thank you.
The good news is all the public referendum dollars for public schools stays with the public schools. Uh, that was a last minute deal that we worked out at the very end of session, so it stays.
To put it, uh, very succinctly, you have served us very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gratitude.
Thanks for being here, Jason. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, and speaking of home rule, I have one. I'm going to surprise our vice mayor here. So our vice mayor was honored with the, um, with the 2019 Home Rule Hero Award, um, from our, from, from the Florida League of Cities. And I'm going to, I'm going to shorten it here, but basically, um, she was recognized for her advocacy efforts during the 2019 legislative session, and it says that, um, it says here, the Vice Mayor Sfetchen was involved in the league's, um, Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee process. As a member on the Land Use and Economic Development Committee, she traveled to Tallahassee multiple times to meet with legislators at the Capitol, and she participated in various webinars and meetings to stay informed of legislation impacting our municipalities. And anybody knows, if you're, if you don't agree with the vice mayor, she's kind of a force of nature, so, um, so I, I can, so I feel sorry for the folks in Tallahassee that was on the other side of her. So congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. That's, that's the board, uh, Senator Pizzo won the same.
Oh, really? So there we go, there we go. So we've got two, um, so we've got two Home Rule honorees tonight, so that's wonderful. And, um, okay, um, so that's it for our special, our special presentations, and we're going to move on to ordinances for first reading, and we're going to go to item 7A, our budget amendment. Mauricio?
7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number 2018-526, approving budget amendment number BA 1819-02 to the city's operating capital improvement budget for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year.
Ms. Tiffany?
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, this is our second budget amendment, uh, of the year, and staff is requesting your approval. Uh, this budget amendment is necessary to transfer funding for our COLA, um, increases from HR to the affected departments, um, as well as to correct, um, a couple of P, uh, police amounts and a purchase order carryover from our first budget amendment, um, as well as to transfer funding in the legal budget from our personnel services to our operating expenditures, um, as well as to appropriate some additional funding there for what we expect to spend through, um, through the end of the year. Uh, it's also to record, um, revenue that was received for a tree planting grant, um, this fiscal year, as well as the offsetting expenditure, um, and to appropriate additional funding for the Winston Towers easement and the 174th, uh, street bridge, um, project. And lastly, to record two purchase order carryovers in the stormwater fund.
Any questions for Tiffany?
No.
Do we hear a motion to approve?
It's a move.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading is scheduled for July 18.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Item 7B is our, um, is our amendment for rental property to modify fees in our licensing section. And that is Claudia?
Mayor, I have to read the.
You have to read it. Yep. That is Mauricio first. You always have.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending chapter 217 entitled Rental Poverty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Isles Beach to modify the fees for license section, providing for severability, providing for repealer, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, um, this, uh, ordinance is to clarify and how the language is going to go, uh, instead of being adopted by an ordinance, by a resolution that affect the fees of the short-term rentals program.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be July 18.
Okay, Alitha, you're in the home stretch. So item 9A.
9A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, granting to Florida Power and Light Company, its successors and assigns a non-exclusive electric franchise, imposing provisions and conditions relating thereto, providing for monthly payment of a franchise fee to the city, providing for adoption of representations, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing a severability clause, providing for an effective date. And this is second and final reading.
Second reading, Tiffany.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, this is a franchise agreement with FPNL, um, to enter into, into an agreement directly with them. Uh, the current agreement is through Miami-Dade County that is set to expire May 2020, so this would take effect at that time. Uh, the terms are similar to other municipalities that have entered into a direct, um, agreement with FPNL. The rate is at 5.9%, um, same as the county's agreement. And, um, instead of annual distribution, it will be monthly distributions.
Excellent.
Um, so, asking for your, uh, approval.
So we're, we're, we're cutting out the middleman. So.
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second. Mauricio?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, Tiffany. Thank you, Alitha. Thank you. Um, okay, we go on to resolutions. Item 10A.
A resolution approving the purchase of four new police vehicles and associated equipment.
Chief?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. This request is for, again, the purchase of, uh, four new police vehicles and all of the assorted equipment that goes with it. Uh, the amount of the request is not to exceed 180,0034678.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
No.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, chief. Item 10B.
A resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with host compliance for short-term rental compliance monitoring and enforcement.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, we use a consultant to, um, assist with the monitor and, uh, compliance for the short-term rentals, and this is the first one-year renewable contract that we have. We keep the same amount as we have it currently.
Okay.
I have, um, just because we normally don't have so many people in the audience, so I just want to take advantage of, of that. Claudia, can you please explain what exactly this is and, and how it works?
The consultant help us basically, um, um, gather all the information that we have online. Basically, they, um, review, um, multiple platforms where people advertise their units, and we are able to monitor and see who is currently advertising their units for short-term rental. So they provide us a report, identification, and multiple, um, other information that it help us, um, achieve that goal.
And, and how many, um, licenses do we have?
Right now, we have currently approximately 600 applications valid, approved. Uh, we have received approximately, um, 900-plus applications. So, and currently, this consulting firm, um, advises that they are, it varies constantly, day by day, hour by hour, but probably 2,200, 2,500, uh, units are being advertising.
Online. Still, the penetration's not bad. I think that, I think we're getting, I think folks are coming into compliance, and, you know, that was the key is, at least we have some degree, and then you have some, some ability. If there's a problem, I know that we have to have a responsible party and.
Correct.
And a place to call, and so when we do, if there is a problem, at least the police have a fallback position, which is, which has been a big issue as well, so.
It's a metaphor between code enforcement and different departments in the city, so, yeah.
But I think the program's working, which is good. If we got 25% penetration in the first six months, I think we're doing something.
We're achieving for 30.
Yeah, okay, I know, yeah, but, but we're getting there, so.
I think, as I mentioned earlier today when we, when we did our briefing, um, what an excellent job, a really well orchestrated effort to, you know, put the, put a compliance program into place, and really very commendable, really excellent, excellent job, and hoping to take it to the next level.
Thank you.
With additional considerations about some of the, uh, you know, some of the problem building, so let's put it that way, that we've, uh, we've identified in the city.
Sure, sure.
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay, um, do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Claudia. Item 10C.
10C is a resolution to adopt the recommendation of the city's Public Art Advisory Committee for the Approval of Art in Public Places Application Number AP 2018-01, submitted by PMGS2 Sunny Isles LLC, approving a public art donation agreement with the same, uh, firm.
Um, the Muse Project is, uh, getting ready to finalize their, um, project, so they are required to, uh, be in compliance with the art requirement. Uh, we came into agreement with the PAC, actually, to donate a piece of art that it will have eventually gone into their project, to be donated to the city. Um, right now, Fabio Delevita is here from the PAC, so if you have any questions, he wants to address it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. Um, on November 1st, 2018, PMGS2 Sunny Isles LLC, the applicant for the Muse Project presented to the PAC their Art in Public Places proposal, which consisted of work of art entitled Meditation by Artist So Young Deck. After discussion, for the discussion, the applicant is donating the art, the work of art to be placed at the future city's meditation garden. The work of art, as described, is in compliance with the guidelines of the PAC, therefore, I recommend to accept the donation of the work of art by PMGS2 Sunny Isles LLC.
Okay, I, I am so happy we have a PAC, because I can tell you that when these things used to come before us, I felt, you know, you know, little qualified to make these judgments. So I appreciate everybody who serves in the PAC, the chairman, and, and, and yourself, Fabio. So, you know, we appreciate the recommendation. Any questions for that?
I, I just wanted to.
Alitha?
Very quickly, I wanted to say, uh, for everyone in the audience, again, this group meets on a regular basis, and the, they take everything so seriously, and I really want to say thank you for, for all the hard work and commitment and, uh, and the hours that you've put in, you know, specifically on this one piece, and how much we talked about it, you know, it's crazy.
Thank you for the recognition.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Yeah, absolutely. So, okay, do we hear a motion to accept the PAC's recommendation?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, item 10D.
10D is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with TD Bank NA for banking services.
Boy, you're popular tonight, Tiffany, I'll tell you. There we go.
Uh, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, this is the first amendment to the original contract with TD Bank to provide, uh, banking services for the city. Um, in 2014, we issued an RFP. Uh, we received three responses, one from Citibank, one from SunTrust, and one from TD Bank. Uh, TD Bank was the most responsible and responsive bidder, so we entered into a contract, uh, starting in July of 2014. Um, and now we're five years, just about, um, and that contract is getting ready to expire. Um, so we'd like to, we've been satisfied with their services. We'd like to renew with them. Um, in the original RFP, um, it did include a consideration for a CPI increase. Um, TD Bank has indicated a 5% CPI increase, which we're agreeable to, since it's, was about 9% during that time. Um, but even with that increase, there's no financial impact to the city because of the earnings credit that we get with the daily balances, so it more than covers it. Uh, the increase is about $100 more a month, $1,200 a year, but again, that's, um, covered.
Understood. Okay, so. Okay, any questions?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10E.
10E is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of additional budgeted funds with Disencrup Elevator Corporation for elevator maintenance services.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, um, last month, I came to you with an item for Otis, a first amendment to our service agreement with them. They maintain eight of the city's elevators. Um, the only two that are not maintained through Otis is the two at the Gateway Pedestrian Bridge. So this request is for an expenditure of funds. This is what is the estimated amount over the five-year contract with Disencrup. We're already in two years, so this would get us through, um, three more years through August 2022.
Okay. Any questions for Sylvia?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Item 10F.
10F is an, is a resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement with Martin & Sons Residential Services, Inc. for pressure cleaning services.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, um, Martin & Sons, we entered into an agreement with them to pressure wash our city sidewalks. We then started to use them also for parks. So we've exceeded our $50,000 limit with you, and we're looking to expand up to $60,549.92 for the rest of this fiscal year.
Good. And our sidewalks can always be cleaned.
We want to keep, we want to keep the sidewalks clean. So I, in the spirit of, of, of that, I'd like to move to approve, so.
Okay. Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Susan. 10G?
10G is a resolution approving change order number one to the agreement with Temple, Inc. for additional enhancements to the rectangular rapid flashing beaking assembly products.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is the Crosswork, Crosswalk Project at 172 North Bay Road, the south landing for the, the bridge, the emergency pedestrian bridge.
Mm-hmm.
We got approval for 109,380 previously from you. This is only for an additional 5,734 more to go from solar to full power.
Okay. Any questions?
Good ideas. So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Motion carries. 10H?
10H is a resolution of the City Commission rescinding Resolution Number 2018-2890, approving a sale and purchase agreement and related easement agreements binding between Winston Tower 600 Condominium Association and the City of Sunny Isles Beach for the property located at 174 Street and Collins Avenue.
Stan, you want to take this one? You want to take it?
I think, uh, actually Claudia is going to take it.
Oh, Claudia is going to take it. Okay. So this one's near and dear to my heart, so I, yeah, go ahead, Claudia.
Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor Commissioners, um, on behalf of our city manager, we're very happy to announce that, uh, we have, um, hopefully reached, uh, fully agreement with the Winston Tower 600. Um, the ma, major modification, major modification is basically that instead of, uh, fee simple title for the landing of the bridge, we are getting a easement in perpetuity for the, uh, for the area, um, due to some legal, you know, impediments that we have, so we'll have to work out. But basically, the areas are not changing. We have a landscaping easement, a utility easement, a temporary easement, and the permanent easement for the landing of the bridge. So basically, we can move forward, build the bridge, and widen the sidewalks.
So just for the public to understand, so in front of Winston Tower 600, which is 174 Street and Collins, and this is the southwest corner, the worst corner, where all the cars make the right turn, we negotiated with Winston Tower 600, we're going to get the piece of land right on the corner, and the strip of land between the sidewalk and their wall, all the way to the park. So we're going to widen the sidewalk, and then we're going to widen the sidewalk along the park. So that whole block, which is very heavily traveled, because folks coming back and forth to Town Center Park all the time, is going to Town Center Park all the time, is going to be widened, but we're going to then build a pedestrian bridge across Collins Avenue from that corner to the park, to Sampson Park. And, and that will take the intensity away from the pedestrian crossing on the south side, which will also enable, it cures a lot of ills. So this is one I've been working on for, it seems way too long, but at least, but we finally got the easement. And we have a beautiful set of plans for that bridge, I think we showed it a few meetings ago. Yeah, it's been, it's a beautiful set of plans for that bridge, and it's almost like a high line, if you've ever been to New York. So we're real excited about that. I want to thank the folks at Winston Towers and the folks at 600 and the staff for basically persevering on this one. So this is one that I'm real excited about. So, thank you, Claudia. So, any questions?
I think this is going to be a great, great, great step in the evolution of our city, real progress in terms of the, this, the streetscaping and also the pedestrian access. So, very, very much, very hard work and good effort, and hopefully a big, big improvement aesthetically and so forth, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, okay, any other comments? Great. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're off to the races. Thank you very much, Claudia. Okay, we move on to item 10I.
A resolution adopting a proposed recommended order relating to a bid protest filed by Schiff Construction, Inc. for invitation to bid number 190101 for the Gateway Park Center.
Okay, Stan, you want to?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, this resolution adopts the proposed order of the special magistrate related to the bid protest for Gateway Park.
Okay, I have a public speaker for 10I, and 10J. Jacob, you want to, you want to speak to? Okay, what do you, you can cover both if you want right now, because the second one's just, just kind of ratifying the first one, yeah.
I appreciate that. I do have just some packets that I'd like to put on the record if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. And if you can say your name and address for the, for the record, Jacob, thank you.
Thank you.
No worries.
Good evening, my name is Jacob Feffer, employed by Schiff Construction, 180 Southwest Sixth Street. We were the lowest bidder on this project to the tune of $5.6 million, a savings of $1.1 million instead of what, the company that you ultimately are awarding this project to, Nunez Construction. I'm here ultimately to illuminate the Commission a little bit on the process. I only have three minutes, so I don't think I'm going to get to very much. Ultimately, my request here is I think you should table this vote until the Commission is able to learn a little bit more about what happened during this process. But I will tell you that throughout, the end result here is that the city is spending $1.1 million more to go with a different firm that is providing and supplying you with the same exact final result. Now, $1.1 million is a lot of money. I've heard some different resolutions tonight, including one for four police cars of $180,000. Well, this would be 24 police cars for this same exact project. Ultimately, what happened here were there were two items that were required as part of the bid, financial statements and a schedule to be produced with our bid. And those were admittedly not provided. However, we provided a bid bond which shows financial capacity. Top of that, the invitation to bid specifically lays out that the project has 305 days before the contractor starts getting penalized. That in itself is a built-in schedule. The ultimate award going to Nunez Construction, we believe that their bid was also ultimately should have been deemed non-responsive if ours was. And the reasons are, their financial statements that they submitted were stamped with a big draft, and they were from 2017. We are in 2019. Those financial statements marked draft are not valid. You can ultimately change those after they get audited or finally, you know, stamped by CPA. And on top of that, their schedule, which they submitted, showed 211 days that they would take to complete it, which the city manager in his testimony at the bid protest said was a factor in determining the award. However, that was actually a typo. If you look at their actual schedule on page three, the dates that they've laid out there, it adds up to 305 days, which exactly the amount of time that we would have agreed to to perform this project, because that was a time that was dictated in your invitation to bid. Ultimately, as a commission and mayor and vice mayor, you have the power to decide whether or not this is, represents the best value to the city. That is what your city code says multiple times throughout the course of Section 62 regarding purchasing. It talks about representing the best value to the residents of the city. $1.1 million for exactly the same project for two documents that could have easily been asked for by purchasing afterwards, because 62.9 of your code allows them to do that and allows you to do that. It's really a blatant misuse of city funds, in my opinion. I'm a former resident here, not a current resident here, but I just also, our firm handles municipal projects all the time. It is 90% of our business. And this is the first time we've ever had to protest a bid, because the dollar amounts and the unreasonable process and the way that we were asked for some things but not asked for others, that purchasing and staff came to visit our previous projects, that the whole process, they made it seem as if we were going to be awarded the job throughout all of their actions and their interactions and their requests for clarifications on some things, but then at the very end to just award it to the fourth highest bidder, the fourth highest bidder, whose bid was equally as non-responsive as ours if you're going to compare the two. Well, in our opinion, that's selective enforcement, and then again, I believe that's a misuse of funds. I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Jacob, thank you. Any questions for the Speaker? No? So, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. So Ed, why don't you, Mr. City Attorney, why don't you describe kind of what we went through, because we went through, we went through a magistrate process with a formal protest and, and ultimately, ultimately, that's what's on, that's why we're dealing with the agenda tonight.
Right, pursuant to the code, Schiff Construction filed a bid protest. According to the provisions of the code, the city attorney appoints a special magistrate to hear that protest. Schiff was represented by a very competent counsel, someone I've known for 20 years out of Broward County, was able to present all of the information that they wanted to to the special magistrate. The special magistrate asked some very pertinent questions and got the responses to those. And, and he deliberated and provided us with the order, the proposed order that's now in front of you. Two things that I'd point out to the Commission. Number one is in your code, it specifically provides that for purposes of this code, of the competitive bidding procedure, the term quote "lowest responsible and responsive bidder" unquote is not the bidder with the lowest dollars and cents bid. So, that, that's something that you as the Commission get to determine, and it's not always the lowest bid, the dollars and cents bid that you can award to. The last thing I want to point out is that in the order itself, in the last paragraph, numbered paragraph, the special magistrate illuminated what the state of law is with respect to bid protests. In any bid protest proceeding contesting an intended city or agency action, the standard of review by an administrative law judge, hearing officer, or special magistrate is applicable is whether the city or agency's intended action is illegal, arbitrary, capricious, dishonest, did not afford due process, departed from the essential requirements of law, or is fraudulent. This standard has not been met in this instance. So based upon that, you know, it is our recommendation that you accept the proposed order that's been submitted to you and will proceed from there.
Okay. Any questions for the city attorney? Any comments? Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the proposed order?
Some move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, item 10J.
10J is a resolution awarding invitation to bid number 190101 for the Gateway Park Center project two and approving an agreement with Nunez Construction, Inc.
Okay, Stan?
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, this resolution awards the bid to Nunez Construction for Gateway Park.
Okay, so this is basically what we're talking about, was the, was the acceptance of the bid. So, so we had a series of bidders, and management of the city decided not to take the lowest bid monetarily because there were, there were obviously issues associated with some of the bids. The low bidder protested, and we went through a special magistrate process, which, which our city attorney just described, and the magistrate basically agreed with the city that we were, that we were in compliance with our own rules. So, so item 10J is to actually accept the bid for the buildout of Gateway Park for the, for the, for the, for the, for the community space. So, any comments?
When is, is it going to start, assuming this is approved?
We anticipate permitting would take approximately 60 days.
Yeah. Plans are done.
Right.
Yeah.
When do we expect it to be open?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, so I think we heard about 300 days, so probably, I would guess mid next year, I would imagine, so. Okay, or later?
Late, late. Close six months.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe fall.
Maybe fall, okay. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth because Chris isn't here. Okay, any other comments? Do I hear a motion approved?
Some move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, on to discussion items. We've got item 12A. We're going to discuss the status of our CAC, and I guess that is Commissioner Goldman.
Okay, so, to, to my surprise, and we've had extensive discussions internally, the number of interested applicants far exceeded the amount, the amount of current committee appointments. So typically, so typically, we have, we have picks, right? The, the mayor has two picks, the vice mayor has two picks, and each of the commissioners has one pick. But it's always been my, my personal objective to have, you know, more inclusiveness, greater participation, and more involvement. That's really the, for me, that's really what the, the ultimate goal or the objective or the purpose for citizen input and citizen, the whole idea of a citizens advisory or a city advisory committee. So we talked, I spoke with the, with Stan, our deputy city manager, and Ed Dionne, our city attorney, about different ways to really accomplish this goal of getting more, more committee involvement and participation, and including those who have applied. So among the recommendations that we had was either to expand the number of picks, where each, each member of the commission would have two picks, so we'd have a total of 10, or alternatively, we could have the staff analyze and make the recommendations much in the way that the PAC has served, where we go from the pool of applicants, look at their respective backgrounds, and say they might be a good fit for this particular committee. So I'm basically a neutral about that. I just really wanted to open that up for discussion, but my ultimate goal is to see more involvement, more activism, more activity, and greater citizen input, and greater, you know, just greater resident support and input into this process. Of course, we want to be sure that when we do these city advisory committee meetings, that we can establish a quorum for these meetings, because we've had that issue in the past. But that's really the idea, is to really kind of expand it, and how do we, how do we accomplish that?
Sure.
One alternative or the other, and how the commission feels about that.
So just so the audience understands, we can't talk about any of this stuff because we vote on it, so, I mean, it may sound administrative, but the fact is, we can't, you know, amongst, amongst the commission, we can only talk about anything that's going to be a formal vote in a public setting, so everybody hears what we talk about. The truth is, we're all very cognizant of that, and we all stick to the rule, because there's a bunch of state's attorneys around that come and tell us that if we don't stick to the rule, we're going to get in trouble. Jason's smiling because, you know, so, but, so, I think that, you know, I personally think the CAC method worked well, so I don't really have an issue with that, with the staff making a recommendation, kind of vetting people and making a recommendation. I would tell you in the past that, I'm sorry, the PAC, the PAC methodology worked well. I will tell you in the past, when it gets too big, you have a hard time getting a quorum. I mean, you know, what happens a lot with, with, what happens a lot with, with our citizens boards is they're issue oriented. We have interesting issues, people are very involved, and they want it, just like a commission meeting. You know, we're talking about plastic straws tonight, a lot of folks are here, okay, and a few other things. But the fact is, is that, you know, these meetings sometimes are issue oriented, so we just have to be careful, I think, in terms of our, of our, of the way we structure our governance structures in these, in these boards, because you don't get a quorum, it's a big waste of time for the folks that show up. And Commissioner Viscara chaired that committee for a long time and, and suffered that, and, you know, used to, used to cry on my shoulder every once in a while.
There were no tears.
There were no tears, okay, crocodile tears. So, so, so that's the only thing I would, but as far as, you know, we want people that are interested. So I like the idea of, if you've got a bunch of interested resumes, you know, I still think the commission wants to be able to have their picks, because if there's somebody I'd like to put on there, I'd like to be able to put that person forth and, you know, be able to appoint them. But I think if we, I think that we would all look favorably, I'm speaking for myself, I would look favorably upon resumes from interested parties that get routed through staff, so I don't have an issue with that, because I think it's worked very, very well with the PAC. You know, the folks on the PAC are all qualified, they're qualified, and they're, and they're, and they're involved, and we're getting a good result from the PAC because of it, so that's my two cents. Vice Mayor?
I, I agree that the more involvement, the better. The challenge is, if they all sit on the committee, they are all bound by sunshine, so that makes it very challenging. And the bigger the committee, the harder it is to get everyone together. So I don't see why we couldn't have the committee and have members. You could go to every single meeting, you just can't vote, but you still can give input. And to me, the difference with the PAC is the PAC has only one issue. It's just art. So they needed to have a background in art in some way. A citizens advisory committee, all you have to be is a resident of the city, and that's the way it should be, because if I don't have any references, or I, you know, maybe I'm a stay-at-home mom, I, I still want to be a part of that, even if I've never worked before. So I don't actually respectively agree that we would have staff vet resumes like as if it's a job interview, but I do think that the more people we have involved, the better. In fact, a lot of people have been asking me, you know, what's going on with this.
Just one, just a point of reference, so I, I had inquired of our city attorney about how big can this CAC be? And you can answer, you can speak to that, but essentially, we do, we are, we can't, we had 29 applicants, so, and a couple that came in a little after. So say we have a universe of 30 or 31, but the way the ordinance is currently drafted, you can speak to that, we don't have the ability to put everybody on as a member.
Correct.
And that wants to be, as, no, as a member.
Well, they can attend. What I'm saying is they can attend and give input.
Yeah, they can attend, but they don't vote.
So, can we do that? Can we have a member that's a non-voting member? Because we talked about that this morning.
Yeah, we, we need to do a little tweak in, in the ordinance, but we can certainly accommodate that if that's what y'all want to do. Right now, as you, Commissioner, explained, there are really only seven members of the committee, two, two, and one for the other three commissioners. But we can, at your direction, we can, we can tweak that to make it, we can have seven voting members and 22 or 23 non-voting members.
For me, I'd, I'd really like to see that, and we could, maybe we could do a hybrid approach, some sort of a blend where, because I have maybe an appointment on one committee that I'm interested in, you may have, you may have, and I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to disregard the interests of my colleagues, but I do want to have a more inclusive and a more collective, you know, a more inclusive sort of a process.
I'm all about the inclusiveness as long as folks get, show up, because that's been the issue in the past. It's, it, you know, it goes for a while, and then, like I said, it's issue oriented, so this is what happens. And then, and I, and I just remember feeling Commissioner Viscara's pain when it, you know, when it went south, so.
It was frustrating. I'll, I'll, I feel like Vice Mayor Sefter was reading off my notes.
There we go.
Because we have very similar, very similar perspectives, but I, I would, I'll just add these, these couple of things, especially if we have voting involved, I don't, it's better to have an odd number of, of members. And I, I don't, I don't know that we would get anything greater from having 10, or having seven, or having nine. I think what we did, it's, it was very interesting going back to that, you know, having people apply online, that we just went back to, to what was already there, that it got lost along the way, we didn't know it was there. We're using the same application that was, that has been online forever. And because we gave it the attention, thanks to Commissioner Goldman, we now have all this interest, 29 people interested. I, I don't think that's ever been, that's, I don't think that's ever happened before, so it does provide this new opportunity. I don't see the need necessarily to, to reinvent the wheel. At this point, I think we should keep it with the seven members, with the, you know, creating the committees the way that it's been done before, because what, we, we strayed from, from the basics. I think if we're going back to the basics, see how it works, keep the seven. And if you have these other 20-something members that, you know, or interested applicants, then, I mean, that's what I thought might be your role as the liaison that you, you mentioned in the last memo. You wanted to act as a liaison to the, to the CAC. Well, I, I see that as a potential role for you, right, to try and keep those people in the tent, help mentor the, whoever the new chair is going to be. And eventually, those people could become subcommittee members if they choose to, but first we have to see if that attendance will, will actually materialize. And so there's an opportunity here.
Well, let me ask you this, let's say we were to go with non-voting members and voting members, Ed, do we, to establish a quorum, is it just the voting members that establish the quorum?
Yeah.
So in other words, we could say it's the seven committee members, but everybody else could be a non-voting member, if they show up, it's optional, but they can still come to the table.
Frankly, that's a meeting anyway. Anybody can come to the meeting.
Exactly. The individuals who are, who are not chosen, right, so, so, you know, whoever my pick is, whoever your pick is, you know, they'll, they'll be the, the, the members of the committee, but everybody else, there's nothing preventing them from participating at their convenience, maybe not everybody can make the, the meetings, there's nothing preventing them, again, this is the existing structure that we have, there's nothing preventing them from joining a subcommittee, whatever those subcommittees end up being. And, and again, try and take advantage of the fact that they realize now that the CAC exists and that there's an interest, and we can capitalize on that without, without reinventing anything.
Well, what if we were to create that second class of, you know, a non-voting membership, where we, we say, hey, you can be a non-voting, that we still, we embrace the 29 applicants, rather than saying, okay, guys, thanks for your interest, you know, see you next year. next year.
I think what's interesting here is that, I think you want to look at the seven members as the most committed, you know, because they're the ones that have to show up at every meeting to have a quorum, to even have a meeting. Otherwise, you get to a meeting, you can't talk about anything anyway, because you don't have a quorum. So I think that you want to vet your 29 applicants, and say, you know, and maybe, and that's where staff might help, because I would certainly like a recommendation and say, okay, you know, the, here's two folks that are really committed, and I wouldn't, you know, I mean, I've had a few people come to me from the community, but I would also want to vet them and make sure, okay, you realize that you're making a real commitment here, it's not just a warm fuzzy for your resume, you know, so, so I think that that's the, so we can figure out the seven that are committed, and then each corral our own pick, and their own picks, and get, get those, get those committed, and then create the second class, it's fine. And that way, there's some formality to the fact that folks applied and they're interested, and then, and then if one of the seven goes off, you know, you'll see the more vocal, you'll see, you'll see of the group who shows up, and who's vocal, and, and then becomes, who becomes, exactly, and then, so it almost creates a, creates a good, a good succession plan as well.
Yeah, and, but I don't think this is different from, from how it already is.
It's not different, no, but all we're saying is, all we're saying is, is that we're going to make some formality around the non-voting class. I'm not saying that, we could say there's no formality, just show up at the meeting, but the fact is, if they came and they applied and they went through a process, we're going to, we're going to put some legs on it, and I agree, I agree with Commissioner Goldman.
And here's the point, and to me, it's almost, as I described earlier, it's almost an oxymoron to have, to call a committee, a committee of one. The idea of a committee is to have several people, so that we've always structured this, like we've had these five committees, but it's a committee of one, in each, in each, you know, historically.
They can sort that out in the meeting.
So that's the idea, and that's why I like the non-voting membership, because it creates a real committee, as opposed to just one member, you know, talking about their ideas. So that's what I like about this.
So I think you got your marching orders.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay, great.
I think we're good?
We're good, we're good. Thanks very much.
Great job. Okay, item 12B, plastic straws.
Okay. Senator Pizzo has, has created that great introduction in the segue, because clearly the impetus for this initiative, or this discussion item, is really the governor's veto of that bill that would have preempted local government from regulating, from within their municipality, the prohibition of straws, and plastics, and so forth. So I think it's pretty incontrovertible that we have a plastic problem, and we have plastics everywhere, and these straws end up in our landfills, they end up on our beaches, and while it certainly, I applaud all the beach cleanups, I feel in some ways that it's really a supply issue. So if you travel to other countries, other areas, other cities, you don't even see straws. So I just spent the last two weeks, I didn't see a straw for 14 days, because other cities and other municipalities, other countries, they don't even have these straws, they don't even have the issue. So it's not just about cleaning up the beach, it's not just about modifying our behavior, it's about pulling out these contaminants to our, to our society. And even though we have a relatively small municipality, it's the idea that the mayor has always articulated that we're one small city, but if our city does it, and then Surfside did it, and Bell Harbor did it, and Callandale did it, all of a sudden, now you have a real movement. So the idea is the collective responsibility that our city has, that every city around us has, to really do something about the just never-ending supply of plastics that do not break down, that do not decompose. So to me, the idea of banning straws is really, it's a statement, it's an initiative, but it's also our collective responsibility to do something about this problem that is, that is literally enveloping our society. So I, I just, I really strongly believe that we should take this next step in our city, and really say, we want to put a clamp on straws, and have this discussion, straws, styrofoam, whatever it is, but we have to start with the banning of the straws. I think it's really a chain reaction, and just like our neighboring cities are doing it, it's time for us to really step up to the plate, and, and really, really, really act on this, while we have, while we have this opportunity. So I open that up for discussion.
Okay, so we received a lot of comment on this one, and I got a host of public speakers, so any other discussion from, let's let the public speakers go, and then we can, we can wrap it up.
Okay.
So, so what I'd ask the public speakers is that, if, if your, if your predecessor said something, you don't have to re-say it, but so, because you can just affirm what your predecessor said, because we've got a, we've got a stack of public speakers. So I'm going to open the floor for public speakers now, and Anastasia Panfilova, Anastasia? Isn't it great to be first? See? See that? See that? There we go. And I like your shirt, I like your ambition builds success.
Anastasia Panfilova, Oceania 3, and then the issue of plastic is something that I strongly feel about. So plastic straws have been around for decades, and they became very popular in 1960s, and there's a company actually that did the estimates, and they, Technomic, and the food service company, and they estimate that as of right now, in the United States, people use 170 million straws each day. It's a huge number. So the excessive use of plastic straws is doing a great damage to the environment, specifically the oceans. So our water is being polluted, and marine life has been injured and killed on a huge scale, due to the volume of plastic that is in the ocean. On a personal note, up until two months ago, Oceania used plastic straws, and they finally replaced them with paper straws. And I have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter, we go to the beach a lot, and she, what she does, she actually makes a lot of, you know, sand castles, and then she likes to pick up seashells on the beach. And then you don't really realize how many plastic straws are on the beach, until you actually look close enough. And even when you do, I'm sure you'll probably miss a lot of them, because they're actually not that easy to spot. So most straws that are sold in our cafes and restaurants, and actually the ones that are being offered at the oceanfront residences, they're, they're colorless, so they don't have any color. When you look, you know, so if you need to find them, you actually have to actively look for them, and then when they get blown by the wind into the ocean, the job gets even harder. So beach cleanups, as we've discussed, they are feasible, but they're time-consuming, they're also very costly, and for most people, including myself, it's very hard to grasp the overall impact of the single-use plastic on our planet. And I'm sure you've seen, or maybe some of you have seen, the heartbreaking photos of fish and seabird, and their stomachs being filled with all the plastic, and I know some of the people are saying that, well, it's not convincing enough, it's maybe one or two birds, and this is, you know, this is not something that I should be bothered about in the first place. But as people who live in Sunny Isles Beach, and will love staying and going to the beaches, and we have a lot of people who come here, also from, you know, from New York, and from other states, and from Florida, you know, I think what we want to do, we want them to enjoy our pristine and gorgeous white sand, versus just coming to the beach and actually being, walking on the beach that has a lot of plastic. I'm not, I don't want to call out any hotels, but if, there's a couple hotels out here in the area, especially that has a lot of inflow of people who don't live here, don't respect the beaches as much as we do, so if you go to those places, and there's a playground in the area, you end up seeing and walking through a pile of plastic that is over, all over the place, and that eventually gets blown into the ocean, and then this is something that pollutes it, and then causes a significant damage. So in short, I want the city of Sunny Isles to ban plastic straws, at least as a starting point, and then there is other solutions, other options. There are paper straws, people don't like them, but you have metal straws, you have biodegradable straws that are pretty sturdy, and then it can actually last a very long time, and there's also boom-boom straws. So there are other options out there, we just need to do a little bit more research, and I'm sure we can find a better option.
Thank you, Anastasia.
Thank you so much.
Actually, this morning, I had breakfast at the Trump, across the street, you know, at Aquilina, not, not the Trump, I'm sorry, at Aquilina, and they gave me a paper straw. It's just, I was thinking about you guys, because it's.
Actually, there, Starbucks has paper straws, Burger-Fine has paper straws, so really, it's, there are, there are some vendors that are already embracing this new, the new world.
The new world. So Linda Hatuka, thank you. Linda, your name and address.
My name is Linda Hatuka, I'm 17275 Collins Avenue, and I wanted to just read briefly some information that I found on the web about the plastic straws, that Americans use an estimated 500 million plastic straws daily, enough to fill 127 school buses, and circle the Earth's circumference two and a half times. 500 million straws weigh about the same as 1,000 cars, close to 3 million pounds, which is a massive amount of plastic, and that we throw into the landfills daily. The other part that I wanted to point out is that although it's a recyclable product, it is nearly impossible to recycle, so nobody really bothers to do it, and if they're incinerated, which, it releases a lot of toxic chemicals into the air, but most of them end up in the ground, where they will hang around for an estimated 400 years, and leach the chemicals into the ground. That means that every straw ever used still exists on this planet. So it's a lot of things to consider, it's hard to wrap our minds around the problems that affect us in other ways in our life, but this is a simple issue that I think we can resolve in the city, and I hope that we can continue to look into that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Jennifer?
Rocker.
Rocker? Okay, yeah, sorry, can't read your writing, so, sorry about that. I was going to say Rot leave, but it's, because it's Rocker, so here we go.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Rocker, 9016 Collins Avenue. I worked on the Surfside straw ban, and the Miami Beach plastic straw ban, and we're about to move on and ban plastic bags, and other single-use plastic, like tableware. I think banning single-use straws would be, plastic straws would be a step forward. They're not biodegradable, they hurt our marine life, and people eat, on average, of the equivalent of a credit card's worth of plastic every week. We do not yet know the impact on our health of that plastic. 80% of the plastic that's found in our ocean comes from storm drains, so that's another thing to consider. We've had really great feedback, the beaches are a lot cleaner, I work for volunteercleanup.org, we do a lot of beach cleanups, and the beaches are significantly cleaner, and your tourists and your residents alike live here to be by the beach, and respecting Mother Nature is respecting ourselves, since we are part of it. As humans, I think sometimes we forget that. The plastic doesn't go away, it just becomes more toxic, and it's absolutely not recyclable. So I would implore you to start with plastic straws, other municipalities have also included a polystyrene ban. The polystyrene, especially when it hits heat, it becomes toxic to, the food becomes toxic that is holding it. So this is a great jumping-off point, and I implore you to move ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wendy, Wendy Cohen? Where's Wendy? Hey, Wendy.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you.
You too.
Wendy Cohen, 19111 Collins Avenue. I know you all want to go home, I had a four-hour board meeting last night, I get it. I just wanted you to know, as almost 30-year resident of Sunny Isles, I'm here to support the plastic straw ban, I've been walking these beaches, well, actually, I moved here in 93, and I actually bring a little glove, and I always carry a bag, and I sit there and I pick up as I go, it's part of the exercise at this point in my life, but it's just horrible. Now I have grandchildren, I bring them to play, they're digging, and they're digging up caps and plastic and straws, and let's preserve our resources, and I hope that you ban it.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, thanks for coming, Wendy. Fabiola.
Good night, everybody. Hello, I'm also in favor of the ban. My children and I, we go a lot to the beach, and it's true, we find all kinds of plastic all the time, and it would be good to start at some point with the ban of the straws, so thank you so much, Commissioner Goldman, for being so passionate about it. But I also have one question, and it's about the recycled bins. Why do we, is there any reason why we don't have recycled garbage bins in the beach? Because I go to the beach almost at the end of the day, because I don't want to go when it's too hot, and when I throw garbage, I see so much plastic, so much cans, like soda cans, beer bottles, and containers, so I don't know if there is any specific reason why we don't have more recyclable bins in the, around the beach area.
Do we own the bins, or does the county own the bins? I don't know who owns the bins.
I don't know, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I'm asking, I'm asking the assistant city manager.
Susan's on her way up to answer.
Okay, Susan's going to answer, because, you know, remember, it's, yeah, it's not, again, we're back to not being our beach, but I'm not making an excuse, because, go ahead, Susan.
So the state, the beach is owned by the state, and the county manages, has the management agreement, so they empty the trash, they clean up the seaweed, they manage all of that.
Okay, yeah, okay, so we would have to lobby the county, Fabiola, we would have to lobby the county to have recycled bins on the beach, because they're not, they're not our bins, you know, it's, you know, there's elements of the city that we often get, that we, we don't own Collins Avenue, we don't, the lights, you know, I mean, a lot of this stuff, some we control, some we don't control. That case, we don't control, but I think we, I think we've got it in the record, that this is something that, that you'd like to see, so thank you. Okay. Eva Rubsova, how's that? Eva, nice to see you, thanks for coming, if you can, your name and number for the record, thank you.
I'm Eva Rubsova, 19111 Collins. I'm here to support the ban of plastic straws, I just wanted to add really quickly, there is other options, and the one you've been giving in Aquilina is actually avocado fiber, really sturdy, and we are not running out of options once we ban it, and I think really it's a great step to start with, to reduce the amount of garbage, and great thanks to all of you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva, thank you. Johanna, where are you? There you are. You're hiding in the back.
I don't know.
You're hiding in the back. Yeah, Johanna can't hide, we know better, we know better, so, that's right.
Johanna Rubenovich, 19111 Collins Avenue, apartment 108, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, 33160. So first of all, I really want to thank Gina Goldman for being here, a little pioneer in the city of Sunny Isles Beach, and bringing this topic up, so I want to thank the rest of the commissioners, Vice Mayor Sfetchen, Mayor Schulz. So there's a lot of facts out there, I didn't know many of these facts. One study published earlier this year estimated as many as 8.3 billion plastic straws pollute the world beaches. So like I said, I didn't know all these straws, but I do know that we have a problem with our beaches. We're a coastal city, we're an isle, we're surrounded by water, we need to do something about it. I've been living in Sunny Isles Beach for over 10 years, and I can tell you that our beaches are no longer what they were. They're not as beautiful as they used to be, they're full of garbage. So I took 20 minutes out of my day today, very busy day, and I went for a walk, and as I go for a walk, in the middle of the sun, I literally just walked down one path.
So you brought gifts?
And in 20 minutes, this is everything that I picked up, and this is leaving out of Ocean 2, right in front of my building, and walked south 20 minutes, actually, walked south 10 minutes, came back, 20 minutes. So this is, this is a lot of plastic, it's a lot, and there's a lot of straws in there. So why start with plastic straws? It's, it's a, it's a stepping stone, and it's a small one, but that can make a very large change. Unfortunately, plastic straws, or any plastic, it's, it's not biodegradable, so it's going to be here forever, and it's something that is not used for long, and it gets thrown away, and unfortunately, in these recycling belts, they're too lightweight, so they don't get picked up and be thrown into recycling. It's going to take hundreds of years to break down into microplastics, it's going to go back into our ecosystem, and it's going to go directly back to us. So the problem is a huge problem, we have a plastic pollution problem, it's a global problem, but I believe that we can help lessen the problem. Banning plastic straws is not the solution to our problem, but it's something small that we can do to make a huge impact, and I think that we need to be leaders in it, and hopefully, this is going to be the beginning of a more sustainable and environmentally friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna. Okay, last but not least, former Commissioner Gatto, Jeanette.
Jeanette Gatto, 230, 174th Street. You know, I struggled about whether I wanted to get up and speak about this, and sort of back and forth, and then kind of.
Thank you, Johanna. Okay. Last but not least, former Commissioner Gatto. Jeanette?
Jeanette Gatto, 230, 174th Street. You know, I struggled about whether I wanted to get up and speak about this, and sort of back and forth, and then kind of wanted to see the direction it went in. And here I am. And I have an opinion. It may not be popular, but at least in the past 30 years of my life, maybe all of yours, everybody pretty much knows what's good and bad for the environment, because those issues have been around for a very long time. I am not a fan of plastic straws. I don't use them. I don't buy them. I don't really use them when I'm, when I'm out, out and about, drinking and eating. But my point is, is that I think banning plastic straws is kind of a silly idea when you're looking at a bigger picture, where we're all drinking out of plastic water bottles, and using plastic forks and spoons, and using bags from Publix and Milan's. It's really a bigger plastic issue, which I think a few of the people have said behind me prior to speaking. And so I feel also, there's a bit of sense, I'm taking issue with the word "ban." I never felt, as a commission, we, or you guys, have really wanted to ban things in terms of using personal responsibility to replace any kind of ban. In other words, we know what's right and we know what's wrong. Don't use them. Don't buy them. So I have a little bit of a Big Brother issue with the banning of the straws. And I feel, again, it's symbolic, but I really don't think that it's gonna make that much of an impact by banning straws. I also saw a statistic that straws represent about 5% of waste, where plastic bottles represent about 30%. Why not go after the bigger, the bigger fish to fry? So in that respect, I'm a little worried about banning. But I think they should tackle the bigger issue in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Got one more speaker on straws. Mo? Mo Grossman? Michael? Go, Mo. How are you? Yeah, no worries. I'm sorry I didn't see you. I'm furious.
Yeah, it's my first time public speaking in a while, so I'm a little bit nervous.
Don't be nervous.
It's pretty cool how my words are transcribed right away.
That's right.
All right. I'm, is someone typing, or is that like automatic?
Yes. I have no idea. I just know it works.
Okay, just doing it.
Yeah, that's right.
Cool.
It's Google Translate.
I'm very libertarian. I feel that free markets are efficient, and the plastic straw is waste. And markets want to get rid of waste, so it's a, waste is a byproduct. It's not efficient. So to maximize profits, you want to get rid of efficiencies. So plastic straws are the cheapest thing. If we get rid of that, and then, you know, work on something else, it's gonna be less efficient by definition, because it wasn't the market's choice, and it'll actually create more waste, maybe not in our beaches, but somewhere else. But I don't want to make that argument today. The argument I want to make is that it's a regressive tax on the poorest among us. You know, a progressive tax, for instance, an income tax, if you do, let's say 10%, everyone pays 10%, then the people that make more money, their 10% is larger, that's progressive. So everyone's paying 10%. A flat tax would be, everyone, like in this case, would be that it hurts actually the poorest amongst us, the people on the fringes of society. For them not to have the plastic straw now, their drink is gonna cost, let's say, five or 10 cents more. So that flat tax is regressive, because it's gonna hurt them more. Like a speeding camera, $100 to a rich guy in a fast car, it's nothing. But the poor guy at the fringes of society, making $30,000 a year, he's hit with a $150 fine, it's really gonna hurt him. So this plastic straw thing, I know it's only 5 cents, but it's a regressive tax hurting the poorest amongst us. So that little kid, who now, who, you know, is a babysitter, who saves up money to hang out with his friends at Starbucks, he now maybe can't afford that drink. I know it's only a few cents, but it really hurts him most. Or that person that's saving up money to, you know, take his family out, he's hurt. And that's the people that's hurt with these, these things that make, I guess, going out more expensive. It's a regressive tax, you know, and that can maybe even contribute to homelessness. You know, people can no longer contribute, can no longer participate in society, because everything has become a little bit more expensive because of these bans. So I think it's pretty dangerous. It's very regressive, because it hurts the poor a lot more. And yeah, we're all kind of rich here. We can afford our phones and to come to these meetings. And we want to do what's best, but these things that don't really affect us, it hurts someone else a lot by tinkering with the market. Thank you.
Thank you, Mo. Thank you. Okay. Public speaking is closed for item, whatever that was, 12B. Comments from the dais? Alex, you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you a little bit of a personal, you know, opinion. And, you know, my, when I moved here from El Salvador, you know, overall, I was just appalled at the waste that takes place here in the United States, you know? Throwing away your food, you know, you're using plastic. We're talking about banning straws here, and we're drinking out of these plastic bottles. So I think there's two components to this. Obviously, you know, we as a commission have certain responsibilities. We are representing the people here of the city. We've heard people, we've heard two opinions, you know? The majority was tipped towards banning. But I understand also the Mo's argument and Jeanette's argument. You know, I have some libertarian philosophies as well that I like. You know, I don't like government to impose, but I think this goes beyond an issue of the government imposing something. This is part of the benefit of our children. This is for the benefit of our world, basically, and our beaches, you know? We're looking at our beaches. We want to preserve. We want to make it beautiful. My thing is that I think this needs more discussion. We need to see if we want to be, impose a ban and be punitive about it, which, you know, it raises some libertarian, you know, questions. You know, is the small business person gonna be, you know, getting fines all the time, and that's gonna hurt his business? So, or do we take more of a voluntary approach? We do have a ban in writing, but, you know, we try to be educational about it and try to kind of change people's behavior, or first, small business behavior. So in my mind, I'm still kind of toiling with a lot of questions. I do want to get rid of plastics. I would like everybody to, you know, bring their own mug and drink out of their own mug, like I do at the, at my office and the city office. I apologize for using this. I shouldn't be. I kind of feel bad about it right now, to be honest with you. And so I think we need, we need to discuss it more and see what type of approach we're gonna take if we do go ahead and ban this. But I do propose, I mean, we need to think about long-term. We need to think about our children and our overall well-being.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think that we can make some accommodation. For example, a lot of discussion about persons with disabilities and the need for plastic straws that might, for adaptation purposes. But I think my, my philosophy is pretty clear that we live in a coastal city, and just like Marco Island, and just like Hallandale Beach, and just like, just like Bell Harbor, and just like Surfside, as a coastal city, we really have a deep responsibility to preserving our beaches and the quality of life on our beaches, and to, to really clamp down on the supply of these plastics that don't, don't, don't biodegrade.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I'm actually, I'm also somewhat struggling, and I use that word loosely, as Commissioner Lama was saying, because we do have to consider, and I do appreciate both points of view, you know, the unintended consequences, like the passed-down cost to people, the enforcement component of it, like are we gonna be going around pulling straws out of people's drinks? Are we, this is gonna be punitive? And also the aspect of, you know, if we do pass it, because of course, less plastic in the environment is good. Of course it is. We have, there's no, there's no, there's no arguing. We have a plastic thing, like, you know, the size of Texas in the middle of the ocean. We're clearly having a plastic problem. And, and I think the consensus here has been, you know, that the plastic straws is a first step. It is, in large part, symbolic. And so to me, I feel, well, it's not really, I guess every little bit helps, but it's not really solving anything, especially when, again, from what I'm hearing today, some of our businesses are already using the plastic, the biodegradable straws, and are already volunt, excuse me, voluntarily taking these steps. I'm not sure what benefit, you know, that ban would have if we're, if we don't have the ability to impose, to enforce it, and if it's gonna have any cost, any, any impact on the cost, and that we're not really considering. I can tell you this. I, I enjoy walking our beaches. That is my, I don't have a gym membership, because that's my gym. And that's where I walk, and I take pictures, and I love it. And on several occasions, I have met people there, talking, who are walking with their kids and their bag of garbage. And a lot of the time, they're tourists. And I don't like that. I don't like that tourists are coming here and going to walk our beaches with a plastic bag to pick up our garbage. So, so there's, there's an issue there. I don't, I don't, I do think this deserves more discussion, because I think there are things that we may be able to do. I think rather than imposing, I like the idea of, you know, leading by example and not explanation. And I think that rather than, as a first step, rather than banning straws, I would say, why don't we, as a city government, look at what we can do? What vendors are we using? What food truck is coming to gateway for, you know, our city's birthday? Shorties, for example. We pay them a lot of money for that barbecue. Maybe we can say, that's great, but, you know, no, no plastic straws. No, you know, no food truck, no plastic straws there. No, no plastic plates. Use paper plates. You know, so I think we have contractual power as a city in terms of the vendors that we use, where we can start making that kind of a difference, as opposed to doing a straw ban that may, may have an impact. It may not. We really can't quantify it. And then we're not really in the position to enforce anything. But I bet you Shorties would like to keep that contract. I bet you that food truck would like to keep that contract. So I think there's things, I think that as a city, we could, you know, not buy the plastic stirrers. You know, we could do things and lead by example before we start imposing on others. Things that I'm not sure, I think in theory is nice, but I'm not sure that it works. We can't, I'm not sure. So, go ahead.
I'd like to add something. I mean, you know, I've been reading Orlando banned plastic straws and some other plastics, but it's for city events, official events, and at city offices. So there's different type of models that are out there. And I think we, as a commission, as a city, might have to study different options and have a plan of action in place to see what, what approach we take. Because right now, we could say, oh, let's ban plastic straws, but then do we have the staff to impose it? Do we?
I get it. Okay. Good. Vice Mayor?
Okay. So I take this very seriously. Just a little personal story about what I do. I use metal straws in my house. I've been recycling since I moved out of my house. And I researched this extensively. I was very careful to not just look at the internet, but look at peer-reviewed articles. I came across an expert. His name is Dr. Ronald Guyer. He's an industrial ecologist. And what he studies on a bigger scale is the life cycle of various things that are creating pollution in our world, not just plastic. And I said to him, you know, what do you think about this? This is like a buzzword. Everyone's talking about this. Everyone's doing it. What kind of impact do you think it's gonna have? His response was, well, it's like one straw in the ocean. And, but he said, but this is very valuable. It's a discussion piece. Now people are talking about it. He said, I have no idea why that one turtle made such a big difference, because he studies much bigger pollution than the straws. But his point was, we should be discussing it. Another thing that he does that's very interesting is that he's got a net green formula. So does it make more sense to have paper straws, but now I'm gonna have to use three of them, because they all broke down? Is it going to, I was in Orlando, and I got a drink with a bamboo straw. As soon as, and I'm not a straw-biter. As soon as I started using it, it broke. So the concept is, do we ban something that is a buzzword, because everyone else is doing it, and now we've created a bigger problem? So to me, this, this is the challenge, because you look at the example of Starbucks. And I said to him, well, what do you think about Starbucks? They're gonna ban straws in 2020, but now they're gonna have these new plastic tops. And he said, well, what problem are they trying to solve now? Because now they've used more plastic than the straws. But now they look really good as a company, because now they're on the bandwagon. So I have already contacted Surf Rider Foundation. Many of you probably are familiar with it. He is the one that got me with them. And what they have is a program that is called Ocean Friendly Restaurants. And they have a, I didn't mean to go into such a big detail about this, but I took a long time researching it. So the idea of voluntarily committing restaurants to not just not use plastic straws, not, not use styrofoam, not use plastic bags, is huge, because ultimately, you're not going to force someone to act differently by banning something. You're just gonna anger them. No matter what I do, my mother throws everything together with the plastic, with the garbage. She doesn't understand what I'm talking about, and she doesn't care, because I can't change that. So I've already spoken to our city manager, who's not here, about putting together a start, a series of films that many of you have probably watched, like Bag It, Trapped, that is not just about plastic straws, that is really about being conscious about the environment and having the public come view these movies on a regular basis, maybe once a month. And again, you know, Dana, thank you for bringing this up, because the conversation, while I was talking to Chris about this, I said, well, Chris, how about these plastic stirrers that we use with the coffee? Can we just get rid of those? And he already said yes. He committed. He's like, okay, fine, you know? So the conversation is happening, but back to the, you know, I, I'm not necessarily a libertarian. I just believe that you're not gonna change behavior by banning something. But education and really researching what the next step is, because, like you said, a lot of these restaurants are already doing it, and it's going to be pushed by demand. The more people are demanding their restaurants to not use plastic, the more they're going to change their behavior. You know, Publix hates me, because every time I go in, I say, paper bag, please. And, you know, they, for some reason, with the plastic bags, they put one item per bag. But when you ask for the paper bag, they put everything in that paper bag. I don't know why they do that. But the more that all of us do that, the, we're gonna change behavior of these companies and these restaurants, so.
So, yeah, for me, again, it's a supply issue, not a, not a demand issue. I think having every city collectively banned will ultimately change behavior. So, but I, I view it obviously differently, but I am very grateful to have this conversation, because just like I initiated, or we initiated, about the baby wipes and about our, our system, it's good to have a public information campaign, but in my opinion, it's really about controlling supply. Because I think that's the, to me, that's the scourge, is the supply issue.
So, so the benefit, where I said I get to go last, okay? So I always said to my kids, I said, you know, you remember the old saying, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time? You know? So who's got an electric car in here? Anybody have like a Tesla or electric car? So I got my wife a Tesla. Okay? So the fact is, why do we get an electric car? Environment's getting polluted like crazy, so why are we supporting electric cars? Because it's a start. Because you gotta start somewhere. And the fact is, is that, you know, I'm a big believer that it's very easy to middle an issue a lot of times. I think you gotta start somewhere. So this is one of those ones where, I agree with Mo fundamentally, but I also think the cleanup costs of a lot of this stuff mitigate the few cents that might affect the public. So they're gonna pay one way or another. Either they're gonna pay with the, with the amount of pollution that's occurring, and ultimately down the road with the cleanup and the environment and everything else associated with it, and the fact that, you know, our fish are dying, or our fish are polluted, and I can go on and on and on, when, or you're gonna have a, you know, you might have a short-term, you know, detrimental effect. So, but, and I also believe that when we do, when we do pass an ordinance like this, we always have a phase-in period. We always have a deep educational period. always have a phase-in period, we always have a deep educational period, so it is enforceable. I don't, I don't agree with you can't enforce it, because the fact is, you know, just like our short-term rental, rental, you know, enforcement, we had a six-month phase-in period, we educated everybody, so, but I do feel, and in our last, in our, in our anniversary party, we gave out metal straws. I mean, you know, one of the giveaways was metal straws. So, I mean, so again, the city's already acting responsibly, I think, in a lot of ways, but, but I'm with Commissioner Goldman on this one, I feel like you gotta take a position, and if we take a position, the next city takes a position, everybody starts to take a position, and then, you know, the restaurants get it, and then it comes around. So, you know, a lot of times, I am more libertarian in my, in my look on some of this stuff, but on this one, you know, I think we have just torched the environment. I, I'm so passionate about the environment, and, you know, and I've, I've read recently about, you know, they've been doing very, very deep studies on marine life, and the amount of micro, microplastic organisms, you know, in our plankton and our marine life, and God knows how that's affecting our food supply, and we think eating fish is healthy. You know, I mean, a lot of us don't eat meat, because, you know, you know, I don't eat much meat, but, but we think that eating fish is healthy, and the fact is, it might be worse than the meat, and we don't even know it. And that's largely because of the, you know, because of plastic in the ocean. So, on this one, I'm with Commissioner Goldman, I think obviously, we're gonna have to have more discussion, but what I'd like to do tonight is, if we could, if we could ask staff to come back with what it looks, with what a ban might look like, or what an ordinance might look like, and then we can kind of, maybe, maybe really then slice and dice it at that, but I'd like to give staff some direction to come back with something, maybe look at the neighboring cities, what do they do, compare and contrast, and we get a little grid, and we can look at it, and then, and then have a more robust discussion. You know, and by the way, I love when we disagree, you know, I mean, because the fact is, when we disagree, that's what we get elected to do, we don't, we don't get elected to agree, you know? I've, you've heard me say many times, when we have a meeting and 300 people show up because they're upset about something, you know, you know, the senator knows that, I mean, it shows that we're not apathetic in our community. So whether you're for something or against something, at least you're taking a position, and you're coming, and you're advocating your position. So, I greatly appreciate everybody coming tonight, and I greatly appreciate all the emails we got, because this one, clearly this is one that's, that folks are passionate about, and I appreciate the folks that come and say, okay, they're going against the flow here, this is great, you know? Commissioner Gatto and, and Mo, I mean, I think it's great when folks come, and I also appreciate the fact that nobody heckled anybody who also didn't speak, who spoke against something. Everybody showed respect, which, again, you know, shows that we have a great community. So, so with that, I think we can give staff some clear direction on that, and, and we'll, and we'll bring it up at a, at a future meeting.
I don't, I can't really top what you said, but I really also want, no, I can't, I don't have less words, in that sense. What I do want to express is my gratitude to the community for really taking an interest in something that is so profoundly important to our lives and our children's lives, and whether it's symbolic, or it's substantive, or it's really grand, thanks to the level of participation in this community about things that are really, really important, so.
Good stuff, thank you. Okay, that closes our 12B. Now, I've got two public speakers for 13, which would be an open topic. Zuma, you, did you want to speak again, or did you?
No, that's good.
No, you're good? Okay. Fabiola, you got something? Last one of the night, folks, without putting any pressure on Fabiola. I know, I know, but she always has something to say.
First of all, thank you, Ms. Larissa, Vice Mayor Larissa, for the oil painting club. We're having an amazing time on Wednesday, Ms. Jennifer come with us too, and it's amazing. Okay, thank you for doing that. And also, I want to say, if it's possible to start conversations with the county about the, the recycled bins, and we can do something for the environment. And the last thing is, I didn't know about Mrs. Zuma's bench, that we were gonna be talking about that today, but I feel very grateful in my life for good things that are happening to us, and my husband has a metal company. And because the initiative of the senator, I would like to donate the bench, anything that you guys decide, we can make it, and the senator can do the installation, okay?
Maybe we'll have three benches.
Yeah, we can do three benches, too.
We get a lot of donations.
Okay, we will do anything metal that you guys decide, okay, approve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fabiola, yes? Okay, in closing, Vice Mayor.
I, I just wanted to plug something, since you brought up the painting club, anyone that's interested in joining the painting club, we meet every Wednesday at 6 o'clock, you don't have to have any experience, it's free for residents. Fabiola's using the paint by numbers, there's no shame, there's no shame in that, it's gonna be beautiful. And we're having a painting pop-up on Sunday at Sampson Park at 5 o'clock, where we're gonna paint right there in the park, if you guys are there, come by and check it out, and if you want to paint as well, please come by, and it's for adults only.
If Fabiola is Exhibit A, I'll be Exhibit B.
Yes, we'll be there.
You need no talent or, or skills, you can just show up and there's no judgment.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming, meeting is adjourned, thank you.